Eighteen, I'll call the meeting to order at seven PM. Mr. Aho, please call the roll.
Mr. Solora?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
And Mrs. Davis is absent.
She is en route.
En route, okay.
If you would all join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do have reason to change the agenda this evening, so I will make a motion to amend Agenda Item L to read that the Board of Education enters into executive session at a said time to discuss employment, discipline, and compensation of public employees as per Board of Education Policy 0166A and to investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee or official as per Board of Education Policy 0166B.
I'll second that.
Mr. Curtis, seconds. Discussion. Mr. Aho, please call the roll.
Mr. Solora?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero. Good evening, and thank you again for attending tonight's meeting. I want to take this time tonight, as we near the election on November 6th, to remind everyone to take part in our wonderful democratic process and make your voice heard. While the district is not on the ballot this November, we will be in the near future, as we look to renew two levies that this community has so graciously supported for many years. There are, however, numerous local, county, and state issues on the upcoming ballot, as well as candidates looking to represent our district in both the Ohio Senate and Ohio House of Representatives, and in Washington DC. Some of these issues, and all of the candidates, will directly impact the Twinsburg City School District, whether it be educational policy, funding, or new mandates. I would encourage everyone to take the time to properly research the issues and the candidates, and vote with your conscience, whatever that may be. Far too often, there is rhetoric spread that is hurtful and divisive, and only clouds the issue and confuses the voters. It is our duty as citizens to do our research and cast our vote for what we believe in, what we feel is best for our community and kids, regardless of what our friends, family, and neighbors might believe or feel. Our ability to have a voice at the polls for the future direction of our community, state, and nation is what makes this place such a great place to live. As we have a packed house this evening, Superintendent Powers, and I know we've got a ton of recognition, I will pass the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Solora. Good evening, Board of Education. It is great to see everyone here standing in their moment this evening, and we so appreciate everybody's presence at our Board of Education meeting. We have a lot to celebrate, lots of students to recognize this evening, but before we get to our student recognition, just a couple of announcements for the Board of Education. Board, this week, we started the work of the action teams, and so this week, the academics, the communications, the facilities, and the safety action teams all met, and have rolled up their sleeves and are beginning the work of creating goals that will inform the strategic plan. In addition to those four action teams, we have a financial action team and a culture and climate action team who have meetings scheduled in the near future. We appreciate the fact that these teams are comprised primarily of our parents and of our residents, and these work groups are going to inform the Board of Education about their vision for the school district moving forward in time. Lots and lots of volunteers, I would say several hundred people, are volunteering to be on these action teams, so we just want to say thank you again to all of the folks who have stepped up and said, yes, we want to be a part of this exciting initiative. On behalf of Board of Education, I say thank you very much. Board, on Monday, October 22nd, we have a couple of exciting things happening in our district, and we have a number of students here today, so I just wanted to inform our parents in case they haven't seen some flyers. The first thing, boys and girls from our elementary schools, we are going to have some excitement over at our transportation department, because we're going to have our first-ever transportation open house. And you can see near the bottom of that flyer that Mrs. Farthing posted, a little character. His name is Buster the Bus. Buster the Bus is actually a robot, and Buster the Bus is going to be sharing with boys and girls all kinds of safety tips about what they do when they ride the bus, and how to come back and forth from home and field trip safely. So, parents, if you are interested in coming out to meet Buster the Bus, I'm sure he's going to be excited to meet all of our boys and girls. It is going to be from five to seven PM at our bus garage, which is located directly behind RB Chamberlain Middle School. And the other thing, boys and girls, that week of October 22nd, Mr. House, who is our transportation supervisor, is bringing Buster the Bus to your schools for some special presentation. So, look forward to seeing Buster the Bus out and about, and we thank our friends at the Lake County Department of Developmental Delays, who really owns Buster the Bus, but is letting us borrow Buster, because it is School Bus Safety Week, and it's going to be a little bit of excitement here for our boys and girls on October 22nd. The other thing that's happening on October 22nd, and I'm sure Dr. Hebert will mention this, is an important event called Rachel's Challenge, and I'm not going to steal her thunder, she's going to be presenting here in a little bit, but Rachel's Challenge is a very important event, and is open to our community members for a night program, so stay tuned for more information from Dr. Hebert here shortly. And then, secondly, the other flyer up on the screen here is talking about our Fill the Bus campaign. This is our third annual Fill the Bus campaign, and it is a lot of fun, because what we're doing is we challenge our friends across the border, that would be the Nordonia School Knights, to see which school district can fill a school bus filled with non-perishable foods, and that will all benefit the Emergency Assistance Center over in Northfield Center. The Emergency Assistance Center happens to be our partner with our Paws on Child Hunger Program, so they have supported our boys and girls here now, I think this is the fourth year of our program, and so we're very happy to return the favor and to help fill their cupboards and their pantries with non-perishable food items. So, until October 26th, we are collecting non-perishable food items at all of our schools and at Board of Education office, and so if anybody is watching this who's a resident and would like to drop off some non-perishable foods and help our kids fill that school bus, because on October 26th, when our football team plays over at Nordonia, Mr. Walker's going to drive the bus, no, you're not really, but we're going to have that bus drive over to, over by the stadium for Nordonia's High School, and we're going to see which school bus is filled to the brim with non-perishable food donations for our friends at the Emergency Assistance Center. So, we thank everyone who is helping us fill the bus, and this year, I just know where to win, right?
That's right.
That's right, okay. So, those are the announcements for this evening, and without further ado, I would like to ask Ms. Lynn Villa, who's the principal at Wilcox Primary School, to please come forward, because I just know we have a lot of wonderful Tigers to celebrate, because they rock, and I see Mr. Asti is here as well. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. We are very excited to welcome our Wilcox Rocks Kids and their teachers, who also rock, for our monthly honors. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Asti, he's going to invite you up, boys and girls. Come on up, we're going to shake some hands, I'll help you with all that, and then we're going to line up here, because everyone wants to take your picture.
Thank you, Ms. Villa. Good evening, Board of Education, community. Mrs. Powers, thank you for being here. It brings me great privilege to recognize some of these great students and their teachers, and it's quite a process we go through. Teachers nominate students, like Ms. Villa said, for really standing out in the classroom and showing a little bit extra friendship, caring kindness to their teachers, staff, and their fellow friends in the class. So, we're going to read about what makes some of these students rock. So, when I call your names, students, come on up, and teachers, if you're here also, please come up, we have something special for you two. So, first up, first grade, Lucas Fantone, in Mrs. Ferrell's class. Come on up. Mrs. Ferrell writes that Lucas is a perfect example of our Wilcox pledge, to be kind, caring, and respectful. It is a proud moment as a teacher when your student gets recognized and applauded for doing the right thing when you're not around, much like a parent. Lucas was complimented for using manners and being kind to others. The class voted him being so optimistic, which was one of our words of the day. Keep making the world a better place, Lucas. And then I get to interview the students as well, and he says, Mrs. Ferrell rocks because she is always nice and is there for her students. If a student does a good job, they get tickets. She is also helpful. One time in computers, she helped Lucas click the right thing. Hopefully, it wasn't a big assessment. Another time, Lucas helped him sound out a word he didn't know. Mrs. Ferrell is the best, and thanks for making the year really good. Our next student is Lehar Arya, in Mr. Hill's class. Come on up, Lehar. Lehar had a great start to her first grade year. She is a hard worker and a great listener. She is kind and caring friend, and Mr. Hill can always count on her to be on task. She is a great helper, good job. And she says that Mr. Hill is always nice, because he lets his students pass out papers. If a student does a good job, they get money to buy stickers, pencils, erasers, or toys out of the treasure box. Lehar says, thank you for making it super good. Our next student is Ethan Heiss, in Mrs. Lenick's class. Come on up, Ethan. Ethan is the definition of responsible and respectful. He works hard every day and is a best friend to all in the classroom. At the end of the day, Ethan takes it upon himself to clean others' desks, straighten up the room, and even asks if anything else needs done. He is a gentleman the whole time he is working. Congratulations. And he says Mrs. Lenick rocks, because she lets Ethan pass out morning work and gives her students treats. She helps her students learn addition, subtraction, and the computers, he says. She has made this a great year, and Ethan says, thank you. Our next student is Cade Nelson, in Mrs. Littler's class. She says, Cade is a leader. He models good behavior and aims to please. He works hard, participates in class activities, and gets along well with others. The students in class love to partner up with Cade, his smile is contagious, and Mrs. Littler is so proud of him. And he says that Mrs. Littler makes Wilcox Rocks because of her STEM baskets and because she passes out money. She helps her students learn how to tie their shoes and made it fun. Cade thanks Mrs. Littler for making it a great year. So far, you are the best. Our next group of students are some kindergartners. Michelle Gallin, in Mrs. Hannah's class. Mrs. Hannah says that Michelle is always helping out in the classroom. She offers to help Mrs. Hannah and her classmates, and she cares about other students in class and tries to make them feel better when they are upset. Michelle is polite and uses her manners, and the classroom in Wilcox rocks because of Michelle. And she said that Mrs. Hannah is always nicer than everyone else. Whenever her students are good, she gives them a piece of candy. If a student gets hurt, Mrs. Hannah always tells them they will feel better. Mrs. Hannah rocks. Our next student is Zelise Williams, in Mrs. Ritz's class. So, Mrs. Ritz says that Zelise comes to school every day with a smile on her face and ready to learn. She always tries her best in everything we do and is an amazing role model. She is very caring and always the first person to help tie their shoe. She was not able to be here tonight, but I wanted to read it to her anyways, publicly. And she said that Mrs. Ritz is really nice and gives her students hugs, smiles, and helps her students whenever they need help. One time, she helps Zelise write the number twos in counting numbers. Mrs. Ritz rocks. Next student is Josephine Steiner, in Mrs. Ione's class. Mrs. Ione writes that Josephine is excited and eager to come to school and learn. She has a love for books, and almost every morning, she chooses a book to read before morning announcements. She is a very responsible student who loves to help her teacher and classmates. One day, a classmate was sad and didn't have anyone to play with, so Josephine went to him and asked him if he wanted to play. Josephine makes Wilcox rocks. And she said that Mrs. Ione is kind and helps her students if they get hurt. In math, sometimes, there is tricky math, and whenever Josephine does not know how to answer a tricky math question, Mrs. Ione tells her to try her best, and then she's able to get it. Josephine says that she loves this class because of all the nice people. Our next student is William Derlack, in Mrs. Pero's class. Come on up, William. She says, William comes to school every day with a positive attitude and is ready to learn. He is always willing to help a friend and is a great role model. He is a true example of the Wilcox pledge by being responsible, respectful, caring, and safe. Wilcox rocks because of William. And he said that Mrs. Pero makes learning fun. When William first started kindergarten, he couldn't read sentences, and now he can. One time, he was stuck on a word, and Mrs. Pero helped him sound it out. William says, thank you for making learning fun, and the star bursts. We do have two more students, and these are some preschoolers this year. So, first up, Micah Best, in Ms. Turpeck's class. Come on up, Micah. You thought interviewing kindergarten first graders was fun, preschoolers was a blast. She said, Micah is persistent and works hard, even when tasks are challenging. He is polite and uses good manners while at school, like waiting his turn and sharing with others. He is never without a friend because of his good nature and kind ways, and can always be relied on to run into errand, wash the tables, or help a friend in need. And he said that Mrs. Turpeck rocks, because she is nice and helps Micah learn math and feel safe. She helps him write his name, color, and works with him whenever he does not know something. Micah says that he loves being in Ms. Turpeck's class. And lastly, Paul Rizzo, in Mrs. Wells' class. She said, Paul is always willing to help the teacher with whatever task needs to be completed. He also helps other students clean up, even if he has not been participating in that particular activity. He is kind, considerate, and always following the class rules. Paul is a joy to have in her class. And he says that Mrs. Wells rocks, because when her students are good, they get things out of the prize box. She always helps him zip up his backpack, and Paul likes being in the class and has made a lot of friends. Thank you, Mrs. Wells. So, if we could have all our Wilcox Rocks students and teachers alike, go ahead and hold up those certificates right in front of your chests and your tummies, so everyone could see your smiling face. Give Mom and Dad a quick smile, we'll get a nice picture here. One more round of applause for all our Wilcox Rocks students and teachers. Thank you, boys and girls, and while you're getting situated, I'd like to call up Dodge for our next portion.
So, good evening, everyone. And to make sure our leaders are ready, aren't they smiling, ready to go? They look ready. Again, every month when we honor our students, we like to start off with making sure they have more leadership opportunities. And at Dodge this year, it has really been a year of leadership moments. There have been so many initiatives that our students have initiated, and so as we kind of go through this, I want you to keep your mind on kindness. And we've really started this year with a theme of kindness, and our students have done an excellent, excellent job of wanting to not only encourage kindness, but model kindness. And so, we're really, really proud about the start of the school year for Dodge, although we're nine weeks in now, but it's been a really great, great start to the school year, and that is mostly because of the great students and staff that we have. A couple of quick reminders that I want you all to look forward to. We have some great events coming up, including our Math Mania, our father-daughter dance is coming up very soon, Dats, I'm waiting to see you all get signed up, we still got a few spaces left. And I also just wanted to congratulate all of our community, our students and our staff. You heard the superintendent talk about the Philibus Initiative that's going on. First two weeks of school, our Dodge families raised over 590 pounds worth of food. So, we're going to keep up that initiative and try to help us beat Nordonia. At this time, I want to turn this over to Ms. Walker, as we recognize our students.
Good evening, everyone. Like Mr. Holland said, we are a school that prides itself on using students in leadership roles. So, tonight, I have some sixth graders here that are going to help us introduce our Students of the Month.
Good evening. My name is Jack McPherson. Character counts at George G. Dodge Intermediate School. The following students were selected by their teachers at Dodge, because they have represented and exemplified the qualities of outstanding leadership, citizenship, academic performance and efforts, social skills, and overall... The character word for fourth grade students for this quarter is respect. Respect means that we follow the golden rule, are tolerant of differences, use good manners and not poor language, are considerate of the feelings of others, do not threaten, hit, or hurt anyone, and deal peacefully with anger, insults, and disagreements. The Fourth Grade Students of the Month from Mrs. MacArthur and Mrs. Palmer's homerooms are Jason Chernick and Jenna Patton.
Good evening. My name is Marlena Riley. The character word for fifth grade students for this quarter is caring. Cared means that one is kind, compassionate, and protective. It means that one expresses gratitude, forgives others, and helps people in need. Caring students are also charitable and selfless. The Fifth Grade Students of the Month from Fifth Grade are Mrs. Xerox, and Mrs. Mighton's homeroom are Mia Bennetts and Emily Ma.
The character word for sixth grade students for this quarter is citizenship. Being a good citizen means that you do your share to make your school and community better. You cooperate, you get involved in community affairs, you stay informed, vote. You are a good neighbor, you obey laws and rules, you respect authority, you protect the environment, and you volunteer in your school, community, and community at large. The Sixth Grade Students of the Month from Mrs. Haas and Ms. Fanning's homeroom are Arya Gebby and Logan Novak.
Hello, my name is Olivia Boykin, and I would like to provide you with an update on the many projects and initiatives that we are working very hard on at George G. Dodge Intermediate School. The 2018 through 2019 school year has been off to an amazing start. We recently voted on our student council members. Our officers consist of a president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer. Each homeroom also has two representatives to ensure all voices of our students are heard. Our student leaders will meet regularly with Ms. Linden to plan fun and exciting projects and events throughout the school. We look forward to a wonderful rest of the year. Thank you.
So, let's give our Dodge students another round of applause, please. And for those of you that stayed on stage, stay there. And if we missed any of our Students of the Month, come back up, because we want to give our parents an opportunity to get a great picture. Okay, big smiles. Thank you very much, students. You may return to your families. Now, as we end, I know that we can't do this alone, families, but I also want to recognize our teachers that are here this evening. So, Dodge staff, please stand and don't be shy. Come on, I see you, I see you. So, thank you very much for your support, and you all have a great evening.
So, this time, we're going to turn over this part of the presentation to the high school with Dr. Hebert.
Thank you. Once again, I have to follow huge cuteness quotient. But high schools cute in their own right. So, we're going to start, we've started something that we call the AAA Bond Rating, and we'd like to recognize kids who, students who exemplify great academics, great athletics, and sometimes just being an all-around great kid. We're going to start with academics today. Back last year, we administered the PSAT, and the PSAT recognizes National Merit Scholars and Committed Scholars. The National Merit Scholars are the ones that move on, and there's like 1% of all of the nation that can be in the running for a scholarship, but the next 2% are the Committed Scholars, and they are, out of 1.6 million students, they're the top 2% in the nation. So, we have some pretty smart kids over here at Twinsburg High School. So, the following students, they are cute in academic ways. The following students have received letters of commendation from the National Merit Scholarship Program for outstanding performance on the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test in 2017. Committed students are recognized for the exceptional academic promise demonstrated by their outstanding performance on the PSAT. These students here tonight are Ryan Adkins, Ian Furness, and Adam Gronke. You guys would come up. We have one other, Dan, but she is actually getting and getting thrombomanas, because our kids aren't just academically inclined. I think Ryan probably ran over here tonight, because that's what he does, he runs. All right, and the rest of them are involved in all kinds of sports and activities and extracurriculars. So, if I could have one more round of applause for the A academic part of our AAA. Parents, I know you want to get pictures. So, the next part is athletics, and we have a lot to be proud of at Twinsburg. If you've been following us, our hashtag is #WinsburgBringIt. I don't care what anybody says, we've got the best sports all around. This week, we have a lot going on. Boys soccer is playing right now, so the next group wants me to get done quickly, so they can go watch and see what boys Roosevelt might have brought along with them. Girls soccer is playing tomorrow, volleyball is playing tomorrow, football is playing Friday, and cross-country is competing on Saturday. So, we have a lot going on, but now, I'd like to invite Coach John Garber and the girls' volleyball team up to the stage. Dave's looking at me like, seriously, get up here. I just said volleyball, they know their soccer. They know I know their soccer, look at them. And there's a lot of them, and they're cute. All right, Mr. Garber, I'm going to turn the microphone over to you. If you could just give a few words about your season, your accomplishments, and what's going on, what's coming up.
Well, first of all, we'd like to extend our appreciation for all the support we receive, obviously, from Mrs. Powers, the Board of Education, our administrative team at the high school, and all of the faculty and staff at the high school. They've been incredibly supportive this year, and just wonderful with our girls. And the season, they've accomplished, for the first time in school history, a record of 16-0. They obviously ended up 7-0 in the Suburban League, so that makes them the Suburban League National Conference Champions this season, and they've ended the season ranked second in the All-Greater Cleveland Award, and they are currently ranked eighth in the state of Ohio for girls Division One Soccer. And they received, they received the number-one seed in the Soul Indis... And they received, they received the number-one seed in the sole district for the OHSAA playoffs, and they received a first-round bye, and they'll be competing in the sectional championship tomorrow night at the turf at 7:00 p.m. versus Kent Roosevelt. So if you have some free time, come on out and support a great group of student athletes. Is that in Twinsburg? Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, women. Go soccer. And while we are recognizing soccer tonight for their 16-0, I think it's really important to realize that all of our sports are doing well. And in November, I hope to bring a couple other sports and individuals who are competing. We have the Suburban League champ, he's right here, Ryan Adkins, in cross-country. He competed in the course and I think ran like three-point-something miles in 15 minutes. I can't get from my bed to the bathroom in 15 minutes. So I'm just really impressed with all of their ability athletic-wise. Finally, we have the all-around part of this. This is the Student of the Month, and we've asked our faculty to identify one upperclassman and one underclassman who demonstrated how to be a team player. Team player can be defined a lot of different ways, and I told the kids tonight that they were going to be recognized, but I didn't tell them why. So I'm going to read, and after I read, I'll have them come up and accept their certificate. For our upper-class Student of the Month, it's Shriya Mishra. Shriya, you want to come up? Shriya is an amazing... Shriya is an amazing team player, especially in dual-credit Spanish IV, because she is totally engaged in class learning activities and is already ready to help out, whether it's taking the initiative to help her classmates, volunteering with great contributions to class activities, or asking thoughtful questions that show how invested she is in her learning. She's volunteered to be a Spanish peer tutor and has been very welcoming and encouraging to the student with whom she will be working. Shriya is always a great player, team player, and a great student to have in class. Our underclass Student of the Month is Bria Jones, 10th grader. When I told Bria she was going to be Student of the Month, she said, "No, no." Bria has really shown great maturity this year in dance class. Bria is always on time, respectful, and very helpful to her peers in class. This is a huge class, and Bria's cooperativeness is extremely appreciated by me, her teacher, and her peers. The students wrote in their journal this week about their experiences in class to date. They were assigned a group project to choreograph a dance. Each person in her group identified Bria as the leader of the group. They praised her ability to make them feel comfortable and explained about how helpful she was. So congratulations. I have just a hot mess up here, but congratulations, thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Slurr. That concludes our comments for this evening.
Thank you. Always so good to see so many students recognized and the accomplishments of everybody. That kind of wraps up that portion of the meeting. I don't know if anybody wants to go see the boys play soccer tonight. Welcome you over there, head over there, now's a great time to get out.
Any of my colleagues have any reports from any committees this past week?
Yeah, the Curriculum Technology Committee meeting, we met October 8th over at RBC Chamberlain Middle School, and actually, it's the first meeting of the year for us. So Jennifer Farthing gave an update just basically on what the committee, what the purpose of the committee was, and we had a lot of new committee members, a lot of parents, a lot of new parents for this year. So we actually had to go around and kind of do introductions and so forth and so on. So that was really nice, got a lot of new blood, and the committee are really looking forward to it. There was a curriculum health, health curriculum update by Dominic Schwett and also Gus Kritchlow. So each kind of gave an update on health curriculum, and what was interesting with Dominic was that he kind of went in-depth about what he does at his level, because traditionally, health isn't introduced until high school. So Twinsburg is one district that extends downward, you know, and allows students to get exposed to certain elements of health prior to when they get to high school. So Dominic did a nice little, nice presentation and the curriculum that he presents. And then Gus also did a presentation on the, on the health curriculum as well at the high school level. Excuse me. Next, there was an adoption of, for the anatomy, the text is the adoption of Essentials of Health, Essentials of Human Anatomy and Physiology, textbook 12th edition by Pearson. And Nora Suter Riley did a presentation on that, as well as just kind of went in-depth about, you know, some textbooks that she looked at and why she chose this particular text as opposed to others. And apparently, you know, the textbook that we've been using is pretty outdated, so we wanted to make sure we upgraded so that we had the most updated information to provide to the students. So the committee approved the adoption of the textbook so that it can be for our consideration this evening. And last but not least, all of the building principals did a presentation and overview of their continuous improvement plans. So I won't steal their thunder, since they're scheduled to talk about those items today. I will say that I was very pleased with what was presented at the committee, and there were a lot of questions. Parents asked a lot of good questions, you know, with respect to their individual plans and implementation, and I think that they got, you know, answers that were sufficient for them. So I'm actually looking forward to the presentation this evening, that you guys will be able to see what we saw at the, at the committee meeting. And that was it.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Any other reports from my colleagues? All right, Superintendent Powers, get administrative report this evening.
We do Board of Education. As you know, the Board, a couple weeks back, approved our district goals, and when we were discussing what the goals would be for this year, one of the things that the Board of Education requested and we're happy to oblige is a frequent report from the principals about how the progress is going relative to their school's continuous improvement plans. What we do as far as the infrastructure of the school district is, following the approval of the plans this evening, quarterly, Mrs. Farthing and Mrs. Trappigan and I will visit the schools for a review with the building administrators as well as a team of teachers, and it will be our intent then, following those reviews, to bring that forward to the Board of Education so that these documents become even more alive than they currently are, and so the Board of Education is aware of the progress that we're going to be making this year relative to our continuous improvement plans. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Farthing, who will begin the presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, Board of Education. Powers, Mr. Welker, is this on, Mr. Gatawski? Yes, okay. As Mrs. Powers introduced us with, we have a student growth goal this year, and our student growth goal is that we're addressing the needs of the whole child through innovative programming while preparing our students to be schooled, enrolled, enlisted, employed, so, but those, that's the short version of it, to be in post-secondary schooling, enlisted in the military, or be competitively employed. When we had the presentation with you when we were making the goals, we saw on your faces you had some questions, like, how are we going to measure that, and how are we going to make sure we're working that through the process? One of our things that we discussed then as an administrative team was moving the needle, and we want to move our needle, we want to take it all the way over as much as we can. And you'll see the graphic here, and we don't want to start on empty because we're certainly not on empty, but, and we want to make ourselves as full as we possibly can. So with that, we, last week, two weeks ago, when we presented the CIP for, I'm sorry, when we did the presentation with report card, we talked about the different goals and the things that we will be working on. So we are going to be working for math to have an annual measurable objective with a subgroup for our performance of 77% or a performance index of 84.2. As some buildings, for example, Wilcox won't have a performance index measure, so that is why we are leaving it with a 77%. So as this evening, Mr. Curtis just discussed, our plans that we have, and we're tonight going to each do a little bit of a presentation about what makes our building unique. So we're going to start with Wilcox, and Ms. Villa is going to talk about what makes Wilcox unique with what their math CIP goal is.
Hi, good evening again. So we were asked to pick one thing that is going to have the most impact on our CIP and on that overall district goal. And so this year, what, what Wilcox is doing is, as you know, we adopted the new GO Math series. That's a series that our students have been using, our teachers have been using for a few years now, but we have the updated version. So in order to get the greatest impact out of that, what we're doing is working in cross-grade level teams, kindergarten and first grade teachers, to align that new GO Math series. They're working on looking at the assessments, aligning it with the standards, and looking at instructional methods from kindergarten to first grade so that we have that vertical alignment, we're speaking the same language, and the children are able to work from one grade to the next, and then that feeds into what BISL's doing.
Good evening. So we will continue that process. The K-6 teachers are working together. There's representation of each grade level, including special education, on the committee, and their job then is to make sure that they are learning with the standards as well as looking at the lesson plans that they're developing. And so some of the key things that we're working with is continuing strategies. So we're going to start in second grade and looking at some strategies that are being done, and expand on those as they go to third grade, so that, once again, that same language is being taught across grade levels, and students are not learning something brand-new every single year. So we're working on that component of the GO Math series, which then feeds into Dodge.
So at Dodge, what we're trying to do is, is continue that progress for our kids and looking at something that we're calling like layered leadership. And so for us, that layered leadership piece of it is really using the skills of our teaching staff, and we've got a very skilled teaching staff to help make sure that we are kind of creating this environment of success, not just for one grade level, but where kids start as fourth graders and where we want them to be by the time they leave as sixth graders, preparing them for RBC and beyond. And so part of that is ensuring that those standards are clear and that we're innovating for kids, again, from the very beginning of fourth grade, looking at where we want them to be as sixth graders so that we're closing gaps and meeting the needs of our higher-performing kids, our kids in the middle, as well as those kids that are struggling.
Good evening. At RBC, we are preparing for the Chromebook rollout next year, and we're going with the cart model. We do not want those carts just sitting in the classroom. So this year, our teachers are attending professional development to be ready to implement the Chromebooks on day one effectively in their classroom. We had great PD on Monday on blended learning and what it looks like to effectively use Chromebooks in the classroom. We're going to continue with that all year. And as our teachers in math are going through the year, really, all of our subjects, they're taking their lessons from this year and then looking at how they will work next year with the Chromebooks in the classroom, and we're going to be ready to go.
Logan, this, the high school's a little bit different because we do have OST tests. And this chart is somewhat misleading because it's last year's, last year's scores, and so we don't have the same kids, so it's a different group of people, but still, the goal is the same, and that's to move the needle forward. If you look at it specifically, we're going to need some targeted remediation in math, especially for our students with disabilities. That's a big gap that we're trying to address this year. One of the first things that we're going to do in terms of targeted remediation is we're planning a blitz in December where they will be remediated Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, have an opportunity to retest immediately on Friday. And those are for our juniors and seniors who need those graduation points, but it also gives us an opportunity to plan what the blitz will look like before the OST test. And we have certain teachers and strands and intervention specialists identified who can work with those kids the best. And so our goal is to move the needle that way, as well as making sure that our co-teaching initiative is implemented with fidelity in the classroom so that our special education students get the best, the most benefit from all the professional development that they've gotten in co-teaching and are able to apply it. Thank you.
So that wraps up our mathematics, and our other number, our other goal this year that we'll be working with is reading. And our reading goal for this year is that our annual measurable objective for reading for all subgroups is a 79.6, and that performance index equates to an 83.8. And again, we're going to do the same thing, and each building is going to tell you what makes them unique, and we'll be starting with Wilcox.
For the last couple of years, we've had the opportunity to work with literacy coaches from the University of Akron. That was through some grant funding, and we learned from them, and then this year, what we have decided to do is look at the experts within. We have three reading specialists in our building. In addition to working with students in the way that they normally would in small groups, the reading specialists are going to be working, each one with eight teachers, for some co-teaching and to target some specific skills. What we're noticing is that our youngest students coming into us are really lacking in the vocabulary area. We've talked about this before with the 30-million-word gap, and building vocabulary, even things like body parts, are areas that we're finding a deficit with our youngest students. And then we're also finding that as our children move through reading in preschool kindergarten and first grade, an area for growth for us is comprehension. They get the very basic comprehension, concrete, character setting, when it comes to that inferential and making connections to themselves and to the world, that's a little bit more difficult for our young students and where they are developing. So those are some areas that our reading specialists will be working with the classroom teachers to really target.
I rode my foot, and it wasn't because I was participating in the wellness initiative. It was after I went home, how about that? But, okay, back on task here. So as we continue to look at that comprehension aspect as well as they move into BISL, this year, we're real excited to implement co-teaching totally in third grade, excited about that. Did a lot of training through the LRE with Mrs. Trappigan and a team of administrators and teachers from the district, so we're real excited about that. We're doing some of that subject-wise in second grade, but we're really implementing it full-blown in third grade, two teachers in the classroom, and working with all students, not just students with disabilities. So working with all students, you have an intervention specialist as well as a regular ed teacher in the classroom throughout the day, working on those specific skills as identified by assessment data. We're also excited, this is our first year for the gifted identification of gifted at BISL. We have not had identification of those students. We've always enriched students, but we, for the first time, have the identify students, so we have four classrooms of identify students, which was, students at the end of second grade were given an assessment, and based on their scores of that assessment, then placed them in one of those gifted classes. So we're excited about that. A lot of professional development happening with that. Was very excited with Dodge teachers coming over who are gifted teachers and doing some professional development with our third-grade teachers, and so we will continue that as well, and just excited about the two new initiatives at BISL.
So again, as we move up to Dodge, I'm really excited to just look at the continuity of program. You heard Mrs. Villa talk a little bit about the coaching, we're doing some coaching at Dodge with our reading and math specials, and you heard Mrs. Johnson talk a little bit about the LRE, and our TVs went there too. So I won't focus a lot on those, but that continuity of program for kids by the time they reach the Dodge, what it... what it means for us is the ability to not have gaps in support and be able to take kids where they are and move them that year and beyond of instruction. For us, what we're doing with some of that knowledge is building from there. And we've noticed the need for our kids to continue writing. You know, we've had a writing initiative over the last three years. And from that, we've talked about, a lot about where we're getting the increased writing skills and the increased comprehension skills. And a lot of it is finding more engaging materials for kids to read. And we're actually starting to look at how more engaging materials are helping kids show what they know at a higher level. And so we're really excited about being able to help kids transition that from the engaging materials on to the different OST tests and things like that that we need to be able to have performance in. And so as we continue to kind of work through those things, I think it builds not only that love for our kids for reading and engagement, but it also lets them, lets us transform some of those skills into those other areas. So we're excited about that, and we hope that they carry that love of reading and writing up to RBC.
Thank you, and certainly they do. Some amazing lessons I've seen this year as we've started to develop a culture of thinking in the classrooms and the four Cs that our students need for their future, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and creativity. And so we are targeting professional development around developing that critical thinking mindset, that culture of creativity, and utilizing a new space in our building called the Maker Space to really take our reading and writing to the next level. And again, these were goals written early in the school year, and I can't, again, say enough of the professional development provided by the district on Monday, probably one of the best professional development days I've ever been to, whether it's at a conference in Columbus or with the local district. That was, it was a fantastic day tied right into these goals. And already this week from that day, Monday, seeing the lessons that are developed from what we did on Monday that revolved around this goal of creating a culture of thinking. And I need ten Maker Spaces next year because it's booked through next July already. And so we're really excited about this goal.
So at the high school, again, we've provided the data, and I want to be able to say I'm excited too. But I am a realist, and in high school, they don't get as excited as, you know, all the cuteness that was happening today. So when we look at these goals, again, I just, I, I, I am excited that English is on the way up. And we, and I'm really competitive, so the performance index is really important to me. You know, I want us to be where Hudson and Solan and Aurora are on that performance index, and ELA is where it's going to happen. So we are working hard to have the blitz mentality when it comes to the testing for the ELA one and ELA two. We're going to instill English across the curriculum in terms of how we read, the reading comprehension strategies, literacy strategies that they are learning from, you know, grade one on. And then, again, with the co-teaching, we have really committed to the co-teaching model in the classroom and committed to more and more professional development, so our teachers are comfortable with that. So, thank you.
And our final CIP goal is related to PBIS or Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. And each building is going to highlight themselves, and I think we're in year three, four? We're in year four with PBIS, and we're going to let each building give a little highlight about what their plans are for this year.
We are taking full advantage of having a full-time guidance counselor at Wilcox. We so appreciate the support that you've all given us, and Mrs. Powers has given us to have a guidance counselor all the full-time. So what that means for us is that we can go back to having those monthly guidance lessons. Our teachers are working on Zones of Regulation mini-lessons that are happening every week. And in addition, adding some time to our Beechbrook social worker has added another layer. And one of the things that she has decided to do is to do what we're calling tiger training. And it's basically social skills training with our preschoolers. And so that will be starting in November, and she'll be doing lessons with them probably once a month. And she, right now, she's looking for a little tiger puppet to help her along with those lessons. But basically, a lot of that is just helping our young children with their communication, making eye contact, reading facial expressions. It's a really challenging thing to do, and a lot of times, our children have electronics in front of them these days. And so there, those interpersonal skills really are an area that we need to work on. So all of that together really will, we're hoping, will help build those social skills with our students and give them more of the, just that self-confidence and ability to work with your peers, collaborate, and, and talk to people.
If I wasn't in pain, I would jump for joy because I cannot say enough what Ms. Villa just talked about in terms of a full-time counselor and the increased services with Beechbrook. It is just making an amazing difference in the climate, in the ability for the individuals to be present to work with students immediately instead of waiting until they return. So it has, has really done wonders. So thank you, thank you, thank you for that. But we will continue with Zones of Regulation. We did start with Hello Week, and I know Mr. Winter presented, as I was at, I cannot believe I was at college night with my son. But Mr. Winter presented our Hello Week with Mr. Hoffman, and it was just amazing to see how the kids just came together. You know, it's so important in this day and age. If you see something, say something. We all get involved, we care about each other, we take care of one another, we include one another. And so we always talk about being a family at BISL. So all these things are just making all the initiatives that we put in place possible. I'm not going to go through all the list, the whole list up there, but it's so important for us to know that we have to look at the whole child, and this allows us to do that. And so I'm very happy that we have been awarded the bronze recognition for PBIS. Worked with SST8, they came out to the building, talked with our teachers, talked with our students. Our students were able to explain exactly what we do, what the expectations are as it relates to our war, respect, organization, achievements, and responsibility. And because of that, we will have that recognition on November twenty-eighth, or twenty-ninth, excuse me, in Columbus. And then we'll be going into Tier Two training, which is more targeted training for PBIS in February. Moving on to Dodge.
So I have to echo Wilcox and BISL and their appreciation for the expansion of our guidance counseling program. We have started to work off through our PBS initiative, a comprehensive guidance program. And so what that will allow us to do is to be proactive. And I think a lot of times with a building our size and the diverse needs of our, of our students, it was reactive. And so to have the two counselors working together with this comprehensive program to be ahead of the curve in terms of helping to support our kids' needs, and it's a variety of needs, whether it's just something that's going on long-term or something that's, that's short-term, but to be ahead of it and be able to help our kids make good choices has been tremendous. We are also expanding into the Zones of Regulation piece for Dodge. I think that's going to be a great piece of it because it will align with our comprehensive guidance program. And part of that for us is helping kids learn how to make those great decisions, how to regulate their emotions and how to make sure they're able to figure out how to make those decisions. I think that Dodge in particular, in four, five, six, is a key age for our kids to figure out how they're going to learn to navigate the world around them. They're starting to like be able to get away from mom and dad a little bit and be independent and be at the park or at the mall or those kinds of things where they need to learn how to make good choices. And so the Zones of Regulations with the guidance program, we're excited to kind of combine those two things together to help our kids have great strategies moving forward into RBC.
Our goals for PBIS this year, we use the term MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. Depending on a child's needs, depends on what tier they're on. All children are, get tier one, what we call tier-one interventions. And then our most needy kids have what we call tier-three interventions. Last year, we implemented our tier-two interventions. Our team went to tier-two training, and they were reviewed and by state support team aide and had stamped with approval for their tier-two interventions that they put in. We found a lot of success with that. And so this year, we have moved on to our tier-three. So our PBS team can attend tier-three training. They're developing their tier-three framework right now. And one of the things that we need to do a better job of and working on is data collection and analysis. And so we're, we've put systems in place this year to collect and analyze data. And that's now part of every staff meeting. We have a staff meeting today to give data back to the staff, things like what day of the week do infractions occur? You know, there's a lot of data that we are tracking. Where do the infractions occur? What demographics are committing the infractions? And so we're analyzing all that data to make our school a more orderly, safer place that's conducive to learning.
So this is my favorite goal, and I can actually say I am like excited. It's hard sometimes to look at your data and say, oh, my God, we have to make a thirty percent gain in reading or a sixty percent gain in math. But this is the one goal that I think for all of us, we see the benefit academically at the end of the day. If we can get our kids to be kind, compassionate, orderly, safe, they're going to be better learners and achievement will increase. So for me, at a high school, sometimes PBIS is difficult to implement because, you know, they don't want to hear about Zones of Regulation or your inside voice or your outside voice. It's all outside voice, right? So sometimes at a high school, it's really hard to implement a true PBIS model. But we are working very hard to start kind of backwards and, and build this chain reaction of kindness and compassion. And Mrs. Powers talked a little bit about Rachel's Challenge. We have invited Rachel's Challenge to come to Twinsburg High School on October twenty-second. It's, and it's, it's basically an assembly. Rachel was the first child who was killed at Columbine. But it's not about school shootings. It's more about how did those kids get to be school shooters? And talking about if somebody had intervened and been kind, would we have had a different outcome in the building that day? And so they're coming on, on, on the twenty-second. All kids will be part of that assembly. We've invited some of the middle school leaders to come up for one of the assemblies so that we have a, you know, a consistent message as they come forward into the high school. I think it will help with the transition from eighth to ninth grade, which is a big transition. We've talked about it before. We'll have two assemblies during the day for the kids, and then that night, there's an assembly for the community, a kind of a modified assembly. You'll be getting some Blackboard messages about this community meeting. And we're hoping our kids go home and say, Mom, Dad, you've got to come with me to see this. It, it is a very impactful message. I, I know that Rachel's father has been one of the presenters before. We are lucky that one of the presenters lives in the Cleveland area, and that's the person that we are having come to the school. In addition, they offer training to one hundred hand-selected students. And we spent an hour and a half with Rachel's Challenge people and those hundred kids about how do we build a, it's not a club. It's, it's more than a club, but a, a community of students who take it upon themselves to teach others about kindness and how to build that culture and climate and compassion so that we can help each other become better people, become better students, become better learners. So that's one thing. We are excited about bringing Rachel's Challenge. It will be a challenging day. Kids will have to reflect. It will be difficult to hear some of the messaging, but, you know, if it was easy, everybody would do it. I mean, I forget who said that, some basketball coach somewhere, but if it was easy, everybody would do it. And sometimes you have to do something hard to get to something easy at the end. One of the other things we are starting is a Who Do You Stand For for ninth graders who are struggling with the transition. We just had our meeting last week with the teachers. We put together a group of about twenty-five ninth-grade students that we are struggling. They're struggling academically. They also have other obstacles that they're facing, death in the family, loss of jobs with their, with their parents. Just, you know, all kinds of obstacles that interfere with their learning. And so we have asked our teachers to take on those kids in a way, even if it's just can you check in and check out with them, which is one of the core components of PBIS. Can we check in, check out with them once a week, once a day? How you doing today? Are you making it through? Just come back and see me. And hopefully, build a relationship, one child, one, one teacher. Some kids go through all four years and will, at the end of the four years, say, I did not have one adult in that building I could go to. And I, I can't stand the thought of that. I want every kid to have one person in the building that they can connect to. And so we're trying to start with our most at-risk ninth graders and pull them along and then train them to be mentors next year and so that we build that capacity within our kids. And finally, we're going to start a student leadership board where we, we bring in our student leaders and give them the opportunity to pick the things they think our school needs work on. We, I mean, I'll tell you what we need to work on, but sometimes the kids will say that, that, that's really not a problem, Dr. Hebert. We need to work on this. And I think we need to give our kids more of a voice and more of an opportunity to be an advocate for the other kids that they see as needy. So those are kind of the three things that aren't true PBIS maybe in terms of the model, but certainly are grounded in the PI, in the PBIS philosophy. So that's what's happening, just a little bit excited about that.
And that concludes our report. We would like to thank you for your support and thank the administrative team for being here with us this evening. As you can tell, we're excited about the things that we have planned and what are going on. And I feel Dr. Hebert joined our team. Again, thank you for our support, and we're going to watch that needle keep on moving.
Thank you.
For education, you may be aware that House Bill 318 is very direct in the requirements now regarding PBIS for students in grades kindergarten to grade three. And it's a really great thing that we're already into year four in our district. There are some districts that are just at the very beginning. And so we thank the leadership of our, our school district, these outstanding principals, who continue to focus on the right stuff, to provide wraparound services to our, our students and make sure they have all that they need. And thank you for, for your support. As you heard repeatedly, thanks to your, your support last spring, we now have full-time guidance counselors in our elementary schools and an additional counselor at Dodge, and it's making a huge difference in reaching kids in a very proactive manner, so we appreciate that.
Moving on to agenda item G, remonstrance. Persons wishing to address the Board of Education should submit a blue card, of which I have two, to the treasurer prior to the meeting so that may be recognized by the Board President, welcome to make comment. No formal action will be taken on subjects that are not included on this agenda until the Board has had an opportunity to study them. Comments regarding persons must be submitted in writing through the office of the superintendent. Although there is normally adequate time for citizens to express themselves at a board meeting, if several people wish to speak, each person will be allotted five minutes until the total time of thirty minutes is used. Each person addressing the Board is asked to give his or her name and address. As I said, I have two cards, so I will ask Ms. Julie Barnes.
Thank you. I'm Julie Barnes. I'm the director at Summit County Children's Services, which is located on Arlington Street in Akron, Ohio. I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the Summit County Children's Services levy this evening. I know you have some information about it already, so I'll try to be very brief. If, if you're not familiar with our agency, we are the agency that is mandated to assess child abuse and neglect for the entire county. We have a levy on the ballot on November sixth, which is issue eight. It will be a renewal of our current two-point-two-five mil levy along with a one-mil increase. The increase, I guess, one thing that I think is important to note when we're asking for an increase, we have not had an increase to the levy that we have currently for thirty years. So we've been operating on the same levy all of that time. And the other thing that I think is important to note is that Ohio provides the lowest funding in the nation for child protective services. So it really leaves the protection of children up to the local communities. We had a very substantial loss of revenue between two thousand and eight and two thousand and twelve, actually, about over nineteen percent of our revenue, of a drop in our revenue during that time period. At the same time, we really saw a very substantial increase in the need for child protective services in the community. Some of that was really largely due to the opiate epidemic and how that impacted children and families in the community. We have seen a substantial increase in the number of children that's come into our custody. We have about two hundred more children, which is a thirty-six percent increase in that time period. We serve currently about ten thousand children every year, which is one in every twelve children in Summit County. So that number actually surprised me even a little bit when I heard it that way. But really, that, I think, points to the fact that these are children who are in every community. They're, you know, in every school district, in our churches, in our communities, our neighborhoods, and sometimes in our own families. So the need is very great in the community. Just in terms of the cost of the levy, so you're aware of that, the addition, the addition to the levy would cost the owner of a hundred-thousand-dollar home thirty-five dollars a year, which I like to put in perspective of that's less than ten cents a day. But the total levy would cost the home, the same homeowner less than a hundred dollars per year. Now, I'd kind of, you know, finish with really just talking about the children that we're serving experience a tremendous amount of trauma. And I think one of the things that we know- And I think one of the things that we know is that trauma really leads to very bad outcomes, not only for children while they're in their youth, but also into adulthood. So really, our investment in children as they're in their youth to get in and try and reduce the trauma that they experience really is more cost-effective than trying to deal with the services that they're going to need much farther into life in many systems throughout the community. So I know that asking for the support for additional money in the community is always very, very challenging, but I'm very hopeful that this community will step up and support child protection and taking care of the children, the vulnerable children that we have in this community. So we appreciate our partnership with Twinsburg City Schools, along with all of the schools throughout Summit County. I know that this evening, Twinsburg Township Council did endorse our levy, and I am asking that the Twinsburg Board of Education would endorse and support issue eight, the Summit County Children's Services levy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Next, we have Mr. Casey Weinstein.
Thank you, and thank you for providing me the opportunity to come and address the Board this evening. My name is Casey Weinstein. I live at 8 Northwest Haven Drive in Hudson, Ohio. I'm currently a member of Hudson City Council and running for the open 37th House District seat, so running for the opportunity to represent you in Columbus. If given the opportunity to do so, just wanted to kind of make it clear that I would be eager to learn from you based on the presentation I heard tonight and based on the commitment I know you have to the community. I know you're experts in this area. I'm not, but I'm committed to learning about the policy initiatives and the legislative challenges that you have that I could hopefully represent, carry the flag for Twinsburg and the 37th District in the State House. I'm a product of public schools my whole life, ended up at the Air Force Academy, which ended up leading me to Ohio, so I've had the experience of growing up in public schools across the country as a military brat. And for the first time, put my four-and-a-half-year-old on the bus to go to preschool for the first time this year. So I'd say it resonates very much with me and the trust that we place in you. I'd like to thank you very much for that. And just to say, given the honor to represent you, I would always have an open door and would be eager to learn and would hope to work on policy initiatives, whether that's through charter school reform or supporting our administrators and our teachers, or figuring out how to get funding right from Columbus or where the needs are and how to best measure district success, not treating every district the same. Those are the kinds of policies that I'd like to pursue in hopes that they would produce better outcomes for students. So thank you again for the opportunity to introduce myself and hope to have the opportunity to work with you soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Concludes remasters. Moving on to Agenda Item H. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read Items H-1 through 3. H-1, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes: regular meeting of August 15, 2018; September 5, 2018; September 26, 2018; special meetings of August 18, 2018; and September 19, 2018; and work session of September 6, 2018, is sent to the Board under separate cover. H-2, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the following financial reports for the month of August 2018: Bank reconciliation, general fund, financial summary report, and financial report by fund, is sent to the Board under separate cover. H-3, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a check register for the month of August 2018, total including payroll is $4,428,182.25. Do I have a motion to accept Items H-1 through 3 as read?
So moved.
Mrs. Davis, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Felber, any discussion? Mr. Aho, please call and roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes.
H-1 through 3 passes 5-0. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read Items I-1 through 3. I-1, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a certified licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the date's terms and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. I-2, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the date's terms and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. I-3, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the date's terms and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. I have a motion to accept Items I-1 through 3 as read.
So moved.
Mr. Curtis, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. DeFabio, discussion? Mr. Aho, please call and roll.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes.
Agenda Item J, action items new business. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read Items J-1 through 9. J-1, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation from Summit Education Initiative, 120 East Mill Street, Number 300, Akron, Ohio, 44308, in the amount of $500 to support the Early Learning Readiness Coalition at Wilcox Primary School per the attached exhibit. J-2, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation of an outdoor grill valued at $149 from Lin Villa, Carroll, Wilcox Primary School, 9198 Darrow Road, Twinsburg, 44087, to be used for staff launches and celebrations per the attached exhibit. J-3, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the various items valued at $685.95 from George G. Dodge Intermediate PTA, 10225 Ravenna Road, Twinsburg, Ohio, 44087, to be used in the Makerspace area per the attached exhibit. J-4, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education, according to Board Policy 9211, acknowledged the following district's support organizations: Twinsburg City School, District Parent Teacher Association, THS RBC Parent Teacher Association, George G. Dodge Intermediate School Parent Teacher Association, Samuel Bissell Elementary School Parent Teacher Association, Wilcox Primary School Parent Teacher Association, Twinsburg Vocal Music Boosters, and Twinsburg Schools Foundation. J-5, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the continuous improvement plans for the district and for Twinsburg High School, RB Chamberlain Middle School, George G. Dodge Intermediate School, Samuel Bissell Elementary School, and Wilcox Primary School as recommended by the District Curriculum Technology Committee on October 8, 2018, is sent to the Board under separate cover. J-6, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the adoption of updated health course of study grades K through 12. The adoption was approved by the District Curriculum Technology Committee on October 8, 2018, is sent to the Board under separate cover. J-7, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves an adjustment to the contract with educational alternatives that was approved on August 1, 2018. Approved amount was $76,498. Prepaid amount should be a total of $89,602, which is a $13,104 increase due to the program necessary for one of the three students, is sent to the Board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. J-8, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves Police Officer Vinnie Camperucchio to provide security at events for the 2018-2019 school year as needed for the following race schedule posted on the agenda. J-9, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for an overnight extended student trip for the Twinsburg High School cross-country team to travel to Hebron, Ohio for the OHSAA Cross-Country State Championship meeting November 2, 2018, and returning on November 3, 2018. The cost of this trip is being paid by the Twinsburg Athletic Department with financial assistance from the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters, is sent to the Board under separate cover. I have a motion to accept Items J-1 through 9 as read.
So moved.
Mr. Felber, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. DeFabio, a second. Discussion? I'd just like to thank Summit Education Initiative, Miss Lin Villa, and the George G. Dodge PTA for their kind donations to support that this community shows. Every single meeting with donations is greatly appreciated. Any other comments? Mr. Aho, please call and roll.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes.
J-1 through 9 passes 5-0. Item J-10, resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education adopted and purchased Essentials of Human Anatomy and Physiology, 12th Edition textbook for the anatomy and physiology course offered at the Twinsburg High School at a cost of $14,495.29 based on current enrollment. The adoption was approved by the District Curriculum Technology Committee on October 8, 2018, is sent to the Board under separate cover. This is a permanent improvement expenditure. I have a motion to accept Item J-10.
So moved.
Mr. Curtis, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Davis, discussion? Mr. Aho, please call and roll.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes.
Item J-11, whereas Summit County Children's Services is seeking voter approval of a 2.25 mil renewal levy with a 1 mil increase on the November 6, 2018 ballot, and whereas SCCS received 10,723 total intake calls in 2017 relative to the well-being of children, and whereas SCCS provided services to 9,719 children in 2017, which is one out of every 12 children in Summit County, and whereas despite seeing a decrease of 58.6 million since 2008, SCCS provides exceptional services to children and families in Summit County while having a 36% increase in the number of children in its custody since 2012, largely impacted by the ongoing opioid crisis, and whereas after tens of millions of dollars in cuts to funding, continued progress in child welfare depends on passing the levy. And whereas without a levy, SCCS must cut 34% of its staff and reduce its budget by 20% as well as eliminate and reduce essential programs that have a direct positive impact on the children and families of Summit County, and whereas SCCS has not asked for a levy increase in 30 years and has twice reduced its levy amount, and whereas the levy increase will cost the average $100,000 homeowner less than 10 cents per day or $35 per year, and whereas the future of the children of Summit County depend on the quality of our children's services agency. Now therefore be it resolved by the Twinsburg Board of Education that the Twinsburg City School supports Summit County Children's Services as an important community partner in providing services which address the safety and welfare of children. And that's Twinsburg City School District believes Summit County Children's Services effectively manages its resources, and that passage of a levy renewal with a modest increase will further positive changes and gains to help strengthen Summit County's future by protecting the safety and welfare of the children of Summit County. And that's Twinsburg Board of Education hereby invest in the children of Summit County by endorsing Summit County Children's Services levy issued on the November 6, 2018 ballot and authorizes Summit County Children's Services to use the name of Twinsburg City School District for advertisements and general publicity purposes related to the levy campaign. I have a motion to accept Item J-11.
So moved.
Mr. Felber, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Curtis, second. Any discussion?
It's just amazing that they haven't had an increase in as many years and the decrease. We all know what budget cuts do to us, and I think that's a necessary partner to help them get the message out on this important levy.
Yeah, I can echo that. I can appreciate, we can all appreciate the necessity for having to raise dollars to continue to provide critical services to students, but, you know, children's services in particular, these are some of the most vulnerable students in some of the most difficult circumstances and situations that they find themselves in on a daily basis. And so to me, this is a, you know, a no-brainer. I think it's important for not only our district, but all districts in Summit County need to be supportive of what they do and allow them the appropriate resources to continue to do what they do at a higher level. So I'm definitely in support of this.
Yes, and simply, I mean, very simply, these children really don't ask to, they're not putting themselves in this situation, and it's something, it's out of their control for the most part, and I do support this levy.
Any other discussion? Mr. Aho, please call and roll.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes.
Item J-11 passes 5-0. Moving on to Ms. Alais. Any comments from my colleagues?
I hate to bring it up, but it's almost that S-word. Someone's going to be driving, you know, it's starting to get cold, and who knows what's going to happen the next couple of meetings. So just, you know, those watching at home and those that are seeing, you know, review the policies, understand how the decisions are made for all three communities, you know, Superintendent driving the roads at 4:00 a.m., we know she's out there, and communicating with three different service departments at three different municipalities. So let's hope that doesn't happen. Let's hope I'm wrong, but the chill in the air and the wind right now, you know, don't get caught off guard, understand the policies and be prepared for that if that should happen and how you plan and each of your families.
They should kind of put it down or...
Good luck to the girls. The boys were doing well, they have, I don't know where they are now, but...
Boys were up 1-0 in the bad. Girls play tomorrow, so that's always good. And Mr. Holland, you mentioned it earlier when you were up here, and I actually got my email tickets today for the father-daughter dance. It will be my fifth one in a row. I was at the first one five years ago. I've got two more left in me, so I'm looking forward to it. I will be there. So I appreciate, that's just another good event that the PTA puts on for us. I appreciate the support of the schools and the administration there, because that takes a lot. You guys have, you know, added workload to get it all put together, but I appreciate it, so.
Mr. Solara, before you close the meeting, we failed to mention that our arts programs are also kicking off in the next couple of weeks. Tomorrow night actually is a huge event for our orchestra. Neil Zaza, who is an electric violinist, will be working with the kids tomorrow during the day and then performing with them tomorrow night. So the high school has great athletics, and we have great art programs, so we have all for all, right? So we just want to remind everyone that our arts programs are also kicking off with a very exciting event tomorrow evening, and we thank our Twinsburg Orchestra Boosters for their support. And then on the 24th of October is the benefit concert for our vocal music choirs. That will begin at 7:00 p.m. That will be the RBC singers, the choirs, Great Expectations, and the Mooswing Singers. So we have so much going on, there are so many things to be proud of academically, athletically, the arts programs, and the community service that our students also provide for the residents here in our community. So I just wanted to give the students and the arts program a plug as well.
Yes, they always are, always a good, always a good time with the arts and the show choir concert and chorus concert is going to be amazing.
And one thing, I want to make sure I remind my board colleagues of the all boards dinner next week. CBCC there, we always are very excited to have all of you guys there, as well as other board members from all of the member districts. It's a pretty big deal for them and a nice showcase for the center, so we're looking forward to that.
Any other comments from Ms. Alais? All right. See, I will make a motion that the Board of Education enters into executive session Act 829 to discuss employment, discipline, and compensation of public employees as per Board of Education Policy 0166A and the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee or official as per Board of Education Policy 0166B. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Felber, second. Any discussion? Mr. Aho, please call and roll.
Mr. Solara?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
The Board is now in executive session.